Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the June 8, 2009 Planning Commission meeting. Welcome to the people's house here in Thousand Oaks. We're going to call this meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of this country, on which we stand.
Good evening. Lilia, would you please call the roll for us this evening?
Commissioner Adam.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Grumney, absent. Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Here, Lynn.
Here.
Okay. Now's the time for public comments. It doesn't appear that we have any public comments here. Item number four on our agenda, those are for issues under our purview, but not are being heard tonight, so we'll move directly to number five. And Mr. Town.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a supplemental packet for tonight's commission meeting, and it contains a letter from the applicant for case 6C. This is the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Storage Partners, the zone change request, and the letter with today's date requests a continuance of that item to a date uncertain. Staff would therefore recommend that that case not be heard tonight and be heard at such time as the applicant is ready. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Will the secretary call the first case, please, 6A?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding case PPD 2009-70034. Applicant Carl Meinhoff requests to allow the construction of first and second floor additions with balconies that exceed 50% of the footprint of an existing one-story, single-family dwelling. Location, 3076 Delacoto Avenue.
Thank you. Mr. Lynn, good evening, sir. You have the staff report tonight?
Good evening, Chair Lynn. A member of the commission, for your consideration this evening, a precise plan of design application has been filed to allow first and second-story addition with balconies to an existing one-story, single-family detached dwelling. The size of this addition exceeds 50% of the original footprint of the home. If I may direct your attention to the screen, the applicant is Mr. Carl Meinhoff. Location is at 3076 Delacoto Avenue. There are photos showing the property with a slope, upward slope toward the rear yard area. The requested construction is for a first-story addition that consists of a family room expansion to the rear left of the dwelling, 74 square feet. The second-story addition will be a new addition with a livable space of 1,292 square feet. That also involves interior remodeling for the house. This PPD request requires Planning Commission approval since the addition of the second-story area exceeds 50% of the original footprint of the dwelling. The project is exempt from CEQA. Living background, the lot area is .18 of an acre, approximately about 7,841 square feet. The existing, single-story house is 2,150 square feet. In the RPD zone, the maximum house height is at 25 feet. This is a front view from the street for the applicant's house. This is the view of the left side yard area. This is the view of the backyard area, looking from the top of the slope in the rear yard area. Again, this is another view of the rear yard. This is the view of the street. The proposed height for the new building design is 24 feet and 10 inches high. The architectural style consists of balconies and railings. There's arched windows toward the front. There's also stone details, and the building will be in earth-ton color. The proposed first-floor addition is 74 square feet. Second-floor addition is 1,292 square feet, with a total additions of 1,366 square feet. With the added proposed addition, the total square foot is 3,516 square feet, which is FAR of .45. It's a little bit over the range of .24 to .41 within the neighborhood. The neighborhood consists of a mix of one- and two-story residents. The proposed house design is well-articulated, and the improvement will be consistent with the overall character of the neighborhood. Staff does feel that the FAR is acceptable, although it is a little larger than the neighborhood. The two-story homes is similar to the massing of other homes of two-story. The second-story addition continues toward the back, which is not too visible from the front, and the proposed design does meet the development standards of the setbacks usable yard area and the height. Staff recommends approval for PPD 2009-70034 based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approved identified in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff's available for any comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Commissioner Reynolds.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Lynn. Is this house, I know there was a letter from the next-door neighbor in the packet, is this house or those two houses, this one and the one next door to the north, are they any closer to the property line than most of the other homes, or is it only because of the mature landscaping that they seem to be kind of close together on top of each other?
It could be perceived that way, although when the original tract was laid out, they do meet a minimum five-foot setback. I think in this case, there's a six-foot difference between the property lines, making it about 12 feet spacing. It may look closer, perhaps, because of the height difference, or maybe there's a few landscaping in between.
There's a lot of landscaping if you drive, when I drove up and down the street and everything, and some, I know the two-story houses now that's further to the south looks like it's further from the property line because of our standards where it has to be, if it's next to a one-story house. So, the setback looks like a lot more, I didn't pick out the address, but you really think that it is, the setbacks conform to the rest of the neighborhood then, and it's just the landscaping that makes you think that they're a lot closer?
The design of the elevation of the addition, where there's a gable roof that's a dormer-like, which is, the height is at 22 feet high, and that takes it back to the height of the ridge at 2410. So, in the front elevation, the dormer design does have that lower effect, and really the actual height of top of the ridge at 24 foot 10 is toward the middle of the house, which is not as visible.
Okay. Well, I know if you stand at the two houses and look at the applicant's house, you can see how high the roof line is now, and it's only because, I guess, they're very high addicts in those homes, and maybe that's why it seems like they're so close then. So, I'm sure we'll hear about this discussion from the applicant or the neighbor if they're here, so.
Right. And it's also because the applicant's house is at the height of that, the street.
Oh, okay.
That may seem taller, too.
Okay. Well, I was curious with the letter, because I thought they had said something, I don't know if this was a zero lot line, or there was some reference in the letter, I know about the setbacks or how close it was.
Yes, the setback from the neighbor was, I think, indicated six feet from the property line. The applicant's dwelling is also another six feet, making it 12 feet.
Right, which is an additional foot than most of them, isn't it? Five feet, isn't it?
Right, the minimum is five foot setback.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. Commissioner Adam.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Lynn. In regards to the letter, our packet from Mr. Tomkinson and Ms. Sue, how would you address their concern about the court reinforcements to the existing foundation that the Meinhoffs intend to do, and that that could potentially damage walls, walkways, and their foundation?
Unfortunately, typically, the structural design is usually the second phase of the plan check process. The first phase being presented to the Planning Commission usually is just the design, and it doesn't go into the structural design phase. Staff is, has no way of knowing the type of design and the structural design that's being proposed. However, additions has been done that's actually be closer to this, to the neighbor's property at times, and it'll be part of the building requirement.
I see. Hmm. Could you, Mr. Town, could you add on to that, if you ever had any experience?
Well, just to augment Mr. Lynn's comments, as he indicated, the detailed construction documents, including the foundation plans, would be developed next if the project is approved. Those would have to be designed by a registered engineer, those would have to be reviewed and approved by City Building and Safety. So, you have a couple of steps there, which would, in my opinion, ensure that there would be no adverse impacts to the neighbor's residence. It is something I think perhaps the applicant may want to address in addition, but that's the typical process for a project like this.
Yeah, good. Well, I'm sure we'll hear from the applicant on that issue as well. Okay, thank you. Just one other quick question. The building in the back will be 24 foot 10, and the staff report cites two other buildings, one that was 24 feet, one was the 236, as precedent in the neighborhood for height. There were a total of four two-stories on that chart on page five. Do you happen to know the height of the other two houses by chance?
Staff doesn't have that information. The height that was indicated in the staff report is the standard height design at the time when the tract was developed, this being that, I think, one of them is at 23, another one at closer to 24, that were the standard design height for two-story for that particular tract, the original tract design.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Lynn.
Thank you, Commissioner Adam. Commissioner Fisher?
Actually, Commissioner Adam hit both my questions. Thank you.
Excellent. We're going to go to the public speakers tonight, representing the applicant, Mr. Matt Loeb, I believe. Pardon the pronunciation. Good evening, sir. You have 15 minutes. Please state your name and your city of residence for the record.
I'm Armarz Matt Loeb, Los Angeles, California. We are really here to welcome any question from the commissioner, because the plans are very self-explanatory, and we've tried to come up with a very beautiful piece of architecture for the neighborhood, and satisfy the owner's needs, which they have three children. That's why we are expanding the house. And we have tried to follow whatever our boss here has directed us to do, and it's been quite successful so far. The rest is up to the chairman and then the rest of the commissioners.
Okay, the rest is up to us.
Yes.
Okay. Is Mr. Farhad here also? Is that the same?
Yes, my partner.
To answer some questions?
Yes.
Or is, does he have a presentation?
No.
I just want to say, no presentation.
Just.
Okay. And how about Mr. Meinhoff?
Mr. Meinhoff is the owner.
Okay. And he doesn't have a presentation for us?
He does.
Yet? You do? Okay, good. Well, we'll get to you in a second then. Okay, questions of the speaker? Commissioner Reynolds.
Good evening. I just want to ask that the majority of this addition is going to be towards the rear of the lot, not coming to the street?
Absolutely.
Correct? Okay, because there are other two-story houses in the area, but some of them are right at the street, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the speaker? Commissioner Adam.
I'm sorry, sir. What would your relationship to the project be?
I'm one of the architects.
One of the architect.
I'm a show to one.
I'm a color man. Okay. Okay. You got me on that. The question I had was, in addressing the neighbor's concern about the potential damage that they feel they might suffer from the walkway, to their walkways and wall and foundation because of the fact that the foundation has to be reinforced on this project, because it's not strong enough to hold up the new structure on top of it.
Actually, it's a quite simple structural solution, and I'm sure any engineer can come up with an answer, because we live in the 21st century, and they dig holes 200 feet next to high-rises nowadays. So, it's a very simple issue that it can be taken care of. It's not even a problem, it's an issue that it can be dealt with very easily by an engineer.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds?
I'm sorry. Is the soils report required for this project?
We don't know. We really, that's something we don't know.
Until the second phase of it after this is approved, if the city decides, because at that time, I mean, they'd know if it's expansive soil, or, you know, what would happen. But what are they just going to dig down for a foundation, a two-story foundation? Is that what the problem is? For the addition?
Is that a question for the architect?
Was that a question for me, or?
For the architect? You're digging down?
I might have to mention, Farshid Farhad, architect, Los Angeles. As far as the design, structural design, as you know, we're at the planning stages. We're not gotten into that stage yet, but because of the, just my general idea about the depth of the foundation, it does not go below 24 inches, generally. So, that being, the building being 12 feet away from the neighbor's, it should be absolutely no problems. It's solved by the shoring issues, if there's any issues. So, that would be, basically, dealt with the structural engineer, but we definitely relay the concern of the owners, the neighbors, to the structural engineers to make sure that they are even more careful as far as the design of the footings. But the footing depth is not that deep anyways, so, and the distance is 12 feet, so, I mean, should be no problems.
Okay, thank you. I just know because I have eight-foot-deep foundation in a one-story house in my own house, so that's why I was curious.
That's because you're well-granted, Commissioner Reynolds. Okay, any further questions for the speaker? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Farhad, do you have a presentation to give us, or are you complete? Okay, sir. Thank you very much. We'll move now to Mr. Meinhoff. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and your city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Carl Meinhoff. I'm the applicant, and I just want to give you a little background of why we filed this application. And, oh, for the record, city of Thousand Oaks. So, we, as was mentioned earlier, we moved into this house 14 years ago, my wife and I, with our children, and now we have three children in a three-bedroom house. So, we have one bedroom for the parents, and one for the children, and one shared office. And, so, the question was what to do. And economically, I guess, at this point, we didn't know this when we started the planning process a year ago, but at this point, economically, you would probably say it would make sense to buy a new house. But there's some reasons we decided to pursue this application further. And the, one is actually our architects who really have made this a very incredibly satisfying process to design this house, which I thought would have been aggravating, but it was really them pouring their enthusiasm and their heart and soul into this, and trying to come up with a design in the limited space that would, on one hand, fulfill our needs, and at the same time, fit into the space and be aesthetically pleasing. We're not the type of people who live in a very, or want to live in a house like Indus Entos that has a lot of representing space, a big foyer, and so on. We need practical space, and this is what we get with this house. But the real, the most important reason for us to stay in the neighborhood is that we've lived there so long and are socially embedded with the neighborhood in Delacoto, but also with Maple Elementary, which we wouldn't want to give up. Our oldest son now has been there five years. Next year, we're going to have all three children in Maple, and I've been volunteering, volunteering and teaching art for four years, so you can imagine, my wife and I and our children have a lot of social ties to the community there, and it would be very difficult for us to leave that area and move into a different school. So, those are really the emotional reasons, the main emotional reasons why we want to stay in this area. I'm not a engineer, I'm a biologist, so I cannot really comment on the, you know, the impact that the construction will have on the neighbors. I can only assume that it's being done all the time, so it shouldn't, it shouldn't really have an impact. Actually, our neighbors and I, who are present and are going to speak, we talked about this letter last week, and from what I understood, it's not that they're objecting to the project, but they want to make sure that this concern's being taken care of. And as I understand, it's really in the second phase of engineering that you, that you make sure that you come up with a design that's compatible with the, with the environment that this construction is being done in. The other concern is one of impact on home values. We were actually a little bit surprised by it, because the rest of the neighborhood and the street is actually very much in favor of the project, because they think it will have a positive impact on the street and on their own home values. I don't know how these things go, but that was another concern, I think, that our neighbor has, is going to speak to, right? Yeah, so, you can explain it yourself. Yeah, so, this really concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you, sir. We'll do that right now. Questions for the speaker? Sir, I think you're off the hook.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Todd Tomkinson. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. You have five minutes.
Good evening. My name's Todd Tomkinson. I live in Newbury Park, next door to Carl Malika. My wife and I lived there for around 11 years. And, first of all, I'd like to say I'm pleased to hear the discussion that's been going on about the letter that we already submitted about the two concerns that we have. I'm glad to see that there's been some thought going into it. And I've been talking with Joey Lynn, I've also spoken with Carl Malika about this project, and just, so, I guess I wanted to comment on, they had mentioned about their desire to undergo this project because of their large family, and I'd like to say I can understand that, because we live in the exact same style house, one-story house, and it would be pretty tight with, with five people, and with the houses so closely together, too, packed together, you can see why they'd need more space. We were surprised that, to hear that they were thinking of this option, though, as opposed to the other more common option, and probably more viable option in this time in the market, the option of moving to a bigger house rather than building such a big house right next door in this tight area. But, that being said, I just want to reiterate the two concerns that we had, just because we wanted to think this out ahead of time and see if there might be any issues in the future, because as soon as things start building, it's too late to raise any concerns then. And so, thinking of any possible problems that could occur, what we had thought of, we had heard that Carl had mentioned in our conversation that the existing house isn't, foundation isn't strong enough to support a second-story addition, so there might be some modifications. And we asked Carl and Joey what those modifications would involve, and it sounded like it wasn't very clear what would involve. Would it be digging? You know, are they going to increase the depth of the foundation, or extend the foundation back? I'm just, I don't know what the process is, so that's why I mentioned that in the letter. We're just interested in more details about what that would involve. And, like Commissioner Reynolds had mentioned, her foundation is, what, eight feet deep? So, this was my, this was my nightmare vision, the eight-foot-deep foundation, coming in with a big backhoe, five feet away from the property line, thinking, okay, what's, you know, that's a pretty steep grade. So, we were interested in more details about what this was actually involved, just to prevent any possible damage to our property. You know, there's a, there's a wall on the property line, and then we have a walkway right next to that, and then our house foundation right next to that. So, from what I understand, I guess that's a later stage in this, in this planning, for the building planning, so I just wanted to, to make sure that we could work with Carl Malika and that be kept informed about what the process would be, and just so they'd be aware of that, that's our concern, that they could, you know, take whatever safeguards would be necessary to protect our property. So, that was really our biggest concern. The secondary concern was related to the height of the addition. I was, you know, surprised that, well, our houses are one-story homes, but the addicts are over nine feet tall at the apex. You know, we can, I can stand up in there fine and have, you know, an extra three feet above me. So, you know, it seems like it's almost enough for a second story already, you'd like to put a dormer on the back. So, I was really surprised to hear that it was going to be an additional six feet tall, which, next to our house, would appear, would probably be about, the roof height difference would probably be about seven feet when we're, what, 12 feet apart. So, it seemed like a big difference, and I have a hard time visualizing what that will look like, but I'm just, my, our concern is that, what if it looks like it's towering over our house, especially the way the land is? You know, their foundation is a little bit higher, they're on a, on a little local hill. And if it were to look towering, what if nobody would want to buy our property if we had to move soon, which we never know when that may occur due to the, you know, the current market situation? And, and if we had a difficulty in selling our home because of that reason, that would in turn, of course, affect the entire neighborhood's home values. You know, there is the argument that, you know, the home values could go up because of the improved look, and so that's certainly possible, but it's also possible that somebody might not want to look, move into that house if it looks like there's another house towering over them. And when we had, when we moved into our house, you know, we had that decision to make, whether we liked the surrounding neighborhood, and now we're here, and we don't, we don't have, you know, it's like that change would occur, and someone moving in might not like that. So, anyway, those were the, our two, two concerns, and thank you for your time in hearing them.
Thank you. Hold in there one second, sir. Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay. We're done with the speakers now. We go back to staff. Mr. Lynn?
Just following up on actually Commissioner Reynolds' question regarding about the second-story addition toward the front. The additions will be above the garage area, while the left side of the front area will be maintained at one story, and the second story will be continued backwards toward the rear, just to clarify that. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Town?
Thank you, Chair Lynn. Just a couple of comments. First of all, the, for the record, the average side yard setback per the plans is five feet, not six feet, as was previously mentioned, just sort of re-clear on that, which is the required setback in this zone. And then also, I believe that the current building, Mr. Lynn, is 22 feet tall, and the proposed height is 24 feet 10. So, I believe that Mr. Tomkinson made a comment about the proposed structure being six feet taller, but I believe it's two feet 10 inches taller. Is that correct, Mr. Lynn?
The system, the current ridge height is at, I think, about 19. With the proposed addition going to 2410, it'll be about six feet, about six feet taller.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Commissioner Reynolds?
Mr. Lynn, also, I noticed on the elevation that the addition also is not going to be right at the edge of the building. It's going to be set in, so that 10 foot from the property line will be with the new addition, correct?
That is correct. The second-story addition does require a setback of five, 10 feet from the property line.
Okay. And also, I noticed condition number nine only talks about landscaping in the front, nothing about the side, and there are windows on the side. I don't know if... I don't know if the people next door are going to lose privacy in their backyard because of all the windows. But there's nothing that talks about screening or anything as far as, from the view of the next-door neighbors. It's only concerned about the front replacement of landscaping. Have you talked to the applicant about side yard landscaping?
No, this was not mentioned because the neighbor's concern was not of a privacy issue.
Isn't that kind of a given? I mean, most people are concerned when there's a second-story addition that they'll lose privacy in the yard. Even though I noticed there is a lot of landscaping in through there now. And I can't believe that the Minehoffs wouldn't continue with their landscaping too at the side. And if anything had to be removed during construction, that landscaping would be put back unless Commissioners want to put some screening condition in the conditions at the time that we discussed.
Right. The landscaping conditions on condition number, I think it was number eight, that was for the purpose of shielding the front elevation after the second story will be built.
Right, so that it's...
The side yard landscaping staff did not put any conditions as it was, the privacy concern was not part of the neighbor's issue.
Does that conclude your question, Commissioner Reynolds? Thank you. Any further questions? Okay. We now have applicant's rebuttal. Mr. Matlou, you have 15 minutes, or five minutes, I'm sorry. Do you want to address the commission? Do you have any questions for Mr. Matlou at this time? No? Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And we have no speaker cards in addition to the speakers that we had tonight. So we will look for commission discussion and/or a motion. Commissioner Reynolds.
Thank you. I just wanted a little discussion to see how the Commissioners feel, if there's any need for landscaping, side landscaping condition because of, for the privacy. Or are you not concerned with all the windows on that side? I don't see any concern or head shaking of Commissioners, so... Well, with that, then, I will move...
Commissioner Fisher has something. Commissioner Fisher?
I was just going to comment that, you know, the applicant hasn't brought it up. The neighbor affected hasn't brought it up. So I don't, I don't see a purpose to condition it based on that.
Then with that, I will move approval of PPD 2009-70034 with the findings and conditions as in the packet. And I think that it's a good addition for the neighborhood. There are quite a few two-story homes. And as long as it's not going to loom over the front of the house, it would be pushed back. And I can, from the landscaping, I can see that the neighbor is very conscious of landscaping and will probably, and with the next-door neighbors, be considerate of their neighbors and think about some screening without me adding the additional condition. I hate to condition it, you know, through the gizu and everything, so... Okay.
Comments to the motion? Please vote.
Motion passed, 4-0. Commissioner Grumney absent.
There is a 10-day appeal period. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Well, the secretary, please call case 6B.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 6B regarding case SUP 2008-70390. Applicant: OmniPoint Communications, T-Mobile. Request to allow installation of a wireless communications facility at an existing hospital. Location: 215 West Janes Road.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chua, you have the staff report tonight, along with the infamous Mr. Kramer to your left.
Good evening, Chair Lynn. Members of the commission, for your consideration tonight is SUP 2008-70390, requesting to allow the installation of 12 wireless antennas at an existing hospital, which is the Los Robles Medical Center. And also to allow the installation of the associated equipment cabinets. This is where the approximate location of the antennas are going to be. It's on an existing parapet. The antennas and equipments will be located behind an existing parapet on the northernmost portion of the hospital building. There will be no visual impact to the neighborhood. There are currently two existing wireless facilities at the hospital on the same location. The applicant has evaluated four, four other sites. This project would provide enhanced in-building coverage in the area of coverage. The proposal complies with the city's wireless standards. The project is categorically exempt under SEQUAS Categorical Exemption 1. Staff recommends approval of SUP 2008-70390 based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval detailed in the staff report. And here's Mr. Kramer, the infamous.
You know, I have to tell you, it's wonderful being back here again, and now with yet a new title. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Mr. Kramer. Counselor Emeritus.
I hope not Emeritus yet. Anyway, I have very little to add to Mr. Chua's report. This is an invisible project. It meets all the FCC requirements based on the way that we've conditioned it. It definitely will improve T-Mobile coverage in the area. And I'm here for questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions from commission? Very good. You're off the hook for now. Now we'll, we'll go to our speaker this evening, Mr. Jim Lee. Mr. Lee, you have 15 minutes to present tonight. Please state your name and your city of residence for the record, please, sir.
Testing. Thank you very much, Chairman. My name is Jim Lee. My city of residence is Los Angeles. Just real quickly, we have a brief presentation. This is the site. It generally sits northeast of the intersection of Medical Center and Janes Road. This is just kind of a further view that's zoomed out. As you can see, most of the, this area is residential, sort of. One of the reasons why we chose this candidate, we can get into why we selected the site. It's a mostly residential area, and this is a pocket of, sort of a commercial area that would provide good coverage, and it'll meet all the objectives from a radio frequency engineering standpoint. Okay. And the new hospital provides ample height to ensure additional height is not required. There were three or four candidates that we considered. The building adjacent, the Los Robles Regional Medical Center. The placement of the antennas on the original building did not provide sufficient screening. And we would further, we would likely have a similar design. When looking at this candidate, we knew right away after looking at the existing mechanical screen wall that we wouldn't require any additional screening. Another site that we looked at was the water tank site at Lynn and Janes. That candidate would not work due to the inability to come to agreement with our lease. After, you know, months of negotiation, the water company wasn't interested in doing a lease with us. The medical buildings adjacent to the hospital are, the existing height is two or three stories, did not provide nearly the height advantage offered at the hospital and the water tank sites. And fourth, the Chinese church, Christian Church of Thousand Oaks. This church has a parking lot across from the hospital. However, the site is lower than any additional candidates and would, and create a negative return on investment eliminating it as a viable candidate for the RF engineers. Basically, the existing height would support better propagation in this area. We also looked at right-of-way site options. However, the heights of existing poles weren't tall enough, and there were few poles for us to co-locate on. And here's a map of the candidates that we've identified and eventually dismissed. Our proposal generally is surrounded by an existing mechanical screen wall where we, where we will recess our antennas into and making the facade of the building blend in exactly as it is now. As you can see from this diagram, that the antennas are just behind the existing screen wall and just recess enough to where it blends completely, integrates into the building. This is our photo sim one. All these photo sims that we're going to go through today, you're not going to see any difference from the building. The, the design will completely be integrated. We have a vendor that will basically go out, sample the existing structure of the building. I believe this facade right now is stucco. So they'll take a sample, they'll mold it, they'll create a radio frequency-friendly panel, notch out the area where our antennas will go, and put our antennas behind it, and blend in with the existing structure. Here's another view further in the parking lot. And this is just as you approach, I believe it's the east wing of the... Oh, it's just the rear of the building. And this is a view from the existing residential area. And this is a kind of a snapshot of upper four and after coverage. As you can see in the upper left-hand corner, there's sort of a void of good coverage. And in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see, just in the middle of the slide here, that it's green. Green is good coverage in this, in this slide. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any questions from Mr. Lee? Thank you very much. Mr. Rob Cersey? Rob here? Just for questions only? Okay. No further speakers? All right. We'll go back to staff.
Staff, does staff have anything to add at this point?
And neither does the infamous staff.
Duly noted. All right. Rebuttal for the applicant, Mr. Lee? Pardon me? No further comments? Thank you. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing now. We have no speaker cards in addition to the speakers that have spoke this evening. And I'll turn now to the commission for a motion. Commissioner Adam.
Yes, thank you, Adam. So we have a cell site without controversy. Isn't that unusual? No visual impact, built behind a parapet. Verizon and Sprint are already up there. Search ring is adequate. I have no problem with this. So I would like to move that we approve OmniPoint's special use permit.
Thank you. Any comments to the motion? All right, please vote.
Motion passed, 4-0.
Thank you. There's a 10-day appeal period. We will now go to item number seven. Mr. Town.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just drawing the commission's attention to upcoming hearings on page 50 of your packet. On June 22nd, the commission will be considering the impact report for the proposed closure of the Canaho Mobile Home Park. On June 29th, will be a special meeting to consider the proposed subdivision of the Viacito Mobile Home Park. And then followed closely on the heels there on July 13th, we have one case, as you can see. And then also, it's not showing up yet, but on July 27th, there are two cases already tentatively scheduled for that evening as well. Then moving on to page 52, items that the commission has considered and that the council has considered or will consider in the near future. The Guckel case, which the commission recommended approval of, was approved by the city council on May 19th. The Kimber Wireless Communications Site that was proposed within a church on Kimber Drive, which the, which was denied by the planning commission, was appealed to the city council, and it was denied by the council as well. Also, I should note that the Many Mansions Project, which the planning commission recently approved, will be considered by the city council on June 23rd. And finally, the Walsh case, which the commission considered and denied, that was appealed to the city council, and that will be heard by the council on July 14th. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Do I have a motion for the minutes of May 11th, 2009 meeting? Commissioner Reynolds?
Move approval of the minutes of May 11th, 2009.
Seeing no comments, please vote.
Motion passed, 4-0.
Thank you. Anyone, AB 1234 reports? Thanks very much. Commission comments? Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. I would ask the planning commission if they would adjourn the meeting in the memory of Sean Davis. Sean's mother was a, Virginia Davis was a planning commissioner for 11 years in the city of Thousand Oaks. And this is very hard for me because she's a very dear friend of mine. She's also on the Board of Governors and also on the hospital advisory board, too. And it's with great sadness that Sean passed away. I don't know if he was born in Thousand Oaks, but I know he grew up with a Thousand Oaks high school and had many, many friends, and was married, and has a wonderful daughter who is quite the star in soccer and had been called up to the Nationals to play. And anyway, so I ask that you adjourn the meeting in the memory of Sean Davis.
I think we'd be honored to do that. And we, our heartfelt sympathy goes out for the loss of the family. So with that, we stand adjourned until 6:30 PM on June 22nd, 2009.